You're done.
All right, thank you. Evening, everybody. Uh, it's six, I got 6:00 PM, that's a little fast. Uh, calls me in the order of the, uh, Dyton, uh, Planning Board. Uh, August 17th, 2022, 6:00 PM. Uh, everybody's notification, this is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. So if you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under one individual who is ready to justice for our rights.
Thank you, everybody. All right, first item on the agenda is item 4A1. Oh, stand back. Uh, first I need to confirm the next meeting date of Wednesday, September 21st, of 2022. Uh, first item of business is Agenda Item 4A1, Wellington Acres Home Owners Association and the Status of Development Assessment, Turnover and Proposed Draft Homeowners Association Agreement Amendment. This is being continued, do we have a date of continuance?
He did not provide a date, but we can get it for September 21st now.
Okay.
Yes, could you imagine, I did want to just confirm that it was being continued, because I don't understand it as well, but, um, the, the September date is fine.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to continue that to September 21st.
On second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All right, hearing none, let's take a two vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ajay, sorry, I didn't see you there.
No problem, thank you very much.
Easy one. Thank you very much. All right, so, next item on the agenda is Item 4A2, which is the E&amp;L Training Incorporated on William Street, Map 7, Lot 1, Site Plan Review. Um, so we received, and I've got several attachments. Okay, welcome to those attachments, we received a package, is the applicant present?
Not sure he's present yet.
Okay.
So if you want to, um, take that amendment? Turns?
Sure, we can, uh...
I know he was planning on attending, so...
Okay, all right, why don't we, uh, why don't we wait, because we do want to have a discussion, um, so we can just, uh, motion, accept a motion to table E&amp;L Training Incorporated item?
On move.
On second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes, motion carries, we'll discuss that when the gentleman gets back in here. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, is 4A3, we received an open meeting law complaint from Mr. Patrick Higgins. Uh, so I'm going to, uh, read here, uh... Want me to read the response or the complaint first?
Uh, the complaint.
Complaint first, let's do that, stand by. Got it right here. Oh, geez, I don't have it queued up. I just found it, thank you. All right, uh, okay, so, this was received by, uh, Patrick Higgins from Northport, Alabama, I'll refrain from reading the rest of his address, but he represents Patrick Higgins and Associates, and it's a public body, uh, that is subject to this complaint, is the Town Dyton Planning Board, specifically Jeffrey Carvalho, Chairman, and the date of the alleged violation is July 20th, 2022. So that was our last meeting we held here. Uh, it says here in the complaint, the text says, "The Dyton Planning Board violated the open meeting law by not making any statement that the meeting was being recorded as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, 20F, as required." And then he provides the reference for the recording. Uh, we post all of our recordings, uh, on YouTube, and they're also provided on cable, so, provided the link. Uh, and in the actions, he would want the public body to take in response to the complaint, uh, he requested that we learn and comply with the open meeting law. So I'm gonna read the, um, response that, uh, was provided, was, uh, put together to Mr. Higgins, "The Planning Board reviewed your open meeting law complaint dated July 30th, 2022, uh, at our meeting, uh, on August 17th, 2022, which is this evening. Uh, it was complete oversight to not announce that the meeting was being recorded by the, by the MGL, Chapter 38, Section 20F, as discussed, at the meeting, the Board will be sure to verbal, be sure to announce, a verbal recording disclosure will be made at all future meetings, as well as displaying a sign clearly informing those in attendance that the meeting is being recorded." We have signs?
I'm getting them printed.
Okay, in the future, we'll have signs so that there should be no question. Um, how many languages are we putting the signs in?
What's that?
How many languages?
Just English.
English, okay, just bad joke. Uh, "The Board voted to authorize me to respond to the complaint in wish to thank you for bringing this requirement to our attention. Sincerely, Jeff Carvalho, Chairman." Um, so, at this point, uh, like to have a motion to, um, authorize the Chairman to respond to the complaint, that's happened already. Um, as a motion to, uh, accept the response in the record?
On move.
On second.
Okay, motion to second, any further discussion before we move on? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's five ayes, aye, okay, thank you very much. Uh, is E&amp;L back in here? Yes, I see him in the back here. Um, okay, so let's move back to Agenda Item 4A2, E&amp;L Training. Uh, applicant is present. I'll grab my paperwork here. So, we received some paperwork for some additional detail, um, for your pure, your, uh... Let me open it here, hang on. Parking spot sketch, and we received that here, and I think you guys should have a hard copy of that hopefully. And also... Here's the aerial view. Okay. Uh, sir, please, uh, state your name and address.
Uh, Rob Paris, 965 Dyton Wood Circle, gym is located at 10, uh, proposed gym is located at 1050 William Street.
Okay, excellent. All right, so, uh, we received your packet here, your update, your updated items for the packet, and how many spots are you planning, it looks like 27?
Yeah, 27, um, and, you know, Steve is obviously the owner of the property, and he'll give us access to however many that we need or is required.
Okay, so, one, uh, piece of information or, uh, response we, we got from our building commissioner is, um, there still doesn't appear to be any detail here about, um, what your plans are for your, uh, your business area. There's an existing building with 6,000 square feet,
Yep.
Uh, but there's no indication of how much of that is actually going to be used for your business.
Okay, so, the entire footprint of the barn area, that 6,000 square feet will be our gym.
Okay.
Um, the only interior work we're gonna do is we're gonna build two bathrooms.
Okay.
Two car.
So, there's, there's a couple problems with that. First one is, um, because it's greater than 2,000 feet, it's no longer a minor site plan. Um, there's a few problems with this. Uh, the other problem is because you're over 10 spots, again, you're above the threshold for minor site plan.
We'll only be taking 10 spots.
Right.
We won't be taking more than 10 spots.
But if your business is 6,000 square feet, you're required to have 30. Okay. This is brought to our, you know, it, it... The feedback from our building commissioner was, "We don't know how big their business is, so we don't know what the parking load is going to be for this business."
Yep.
Your original application said 6,000 feet, and our, our understanding was, you weren't gonna use all 6,000 for your business.
But it says 6,000, I don't know.
It doesn't specifically say what we're using for your business, it says existing building, but it, it didn't, it didn't specifically call, specifically call it out. I think that's one of his references, uh, from the building commissioner where he said that he couldn't determine what your business footprint is going to be. And bylaw says that for stores, retail businesses, and services, that you need one space per 200 square feet of net leasable floor area, or minimum at least three spaces per establishment. So for less than 2,000 feet, you'd need three, uh, because you're, you know, or 6,000 square feet, you need 30.
There's room for 30 spots if, if we need it. There's, there's additional sp, space available in that lot.
Right. So, um, I don't know where we go from here, Mrs. Easterday, um, with, with this, because this was submitted as a, as a, as a minor site plan, um, so we're at that threshold, I don't know what that requires to go one step further. Is it a public hearing or anything like that, moving forward?
For a site plan, no, it doesn't require, um, it would only be if it was a special permit, but there's no special permit required.
Could we just have it, get a plan drawn up that shows the 30 parking spaces?
That's what I'm looking at, which he did present the hand sketch plan.
Yeah, we have the hand sketch plan. And, I mean, it, it appears to me that there's, there's room for 30, without any issues here at all.
Yeah, there's absolutely room for 30, there's no question. He probably just picked out 27 because it made it symmetrical, you know, to, instead of just adding three spots somewhere random.
Yeah, he's got, he's got a total of 26, um, shown here, uh, but he also shows, I think that's, is that two or three handicap spots that are not part of the numbering?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm looking at the, the hand sketch that was provided. Doing a real time check, stand by. No worries.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, is this the only issue is the parking spaces?
Yes.
Then you thought that you said there's a few issues?
I, well, I was concerned, I was concerned, I was concerned about it being above the 2,000 square feet for a minor, but it doesn't sound like minor or major makes much of a difference, really. It comes down to, it sounds like the only issue is number of parking spots.
Yeah, I mean, that parking, that parking area, even if we need to go into the dirt area to, to have parking over there, we can do that. I mean, there's, there's probably room for 60 cars over there, even if we had to park around back,
Okay.
which hopefully we don't.
Yeah, I'm just, can only go by what you provided.
No, absolutely, absolutely, that was actually, um, so Steve's engineer actually did that.
Okay. Yeah.
We're supposed to have, he was supposed to have another engineer, and, you know...
That's...
How many of you guys are engineers? All right, good, so I can talk negatively about it?
I'm an engineer.
Do you think you could have, do you think you could have the engineer draw this up?
Oh, yeah, 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 I can text Steve right now and just have him add three, four spots, whatever we need to add onto that, I'll have him do it.
Yeah, I mean, once you submit that, I have no problems with it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's the only sticking point, is that, that it showed there, and, you know, the threshold is, is 1 for 200, yes ma'am?
So, should we go from the minor site plan to the major site plan? Does it need to change a little bit? And then would it require you to go to this?
Oh, from 60, to, um, page 68 here?
Yeah, I see then appropriation, and then would it require it's changed? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
You want to?
Yeah. Yeah. I know it would require this, something I would, you know, he could ask for...
Waiver of compliance?
Some waivers, I don't know.
Yeah, so what we're looking at right now is, um, the, um, threshold between a minor site plan and a major site plan brings along with it a lot of other requirements, uh, but there is a, um, waiver of compliance that if we're comfortable with what's happening here, at the discretion of the Board, we could, um, upon a written request by the applicant, waive any of the requirements of 5400 where the project involves relatively simple development plans or constitutes a minor site plan. So, this, I, in my opinion, falls in that category, but I'm gonna leave it up to the Board here.
I understand what kind of business he's doing down there.
Yep.
And he's not gonna have a lot of people there at one time.
No, I mean, maximum, probably 10 cars would be a lot of cars, you know?
Right, like, that's if you had a whole team show up.
Exactly, and even then, a lot of times what happens is the parents come, drop the kids off, and then go do whatever.
It's gotta be similar to that gym they had over in Berkeley.
Exactly.
I don't know, what kind of fitness they call that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Cross training?
Yeah, CrossFit, yeah, yeah.
So...
Similar to that, love batting cages in there.
Yeah.
So, so, I would say two things, um, we don't have to vote on it tonight, but, um, I would prepare a written waiver request, if you want to note this, in 5450 is a section of the bylaw. It's a quick paragraph. And then, um, if you're looking at 3120, gives you a nice table with your number of spots required, but 6,000 square feet, it's the magic number, which is 30. 5450?
50, yep.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, thank you so much.
5450 will give you the waiver of compliance within the, um, to, to waive the requirements for the major. And then the, um, 3120 will give you your spot requirement, but 30's the number.
We need 30 spots. Okay, that's easy enough.
Easy enough.
Um, so, just a question, are we gonna have to come back again in September? Or, we're kind of hoping to get some work started over there, you know, at least apply for the building permit? Um, is that something that we're gonna have to wait until September meeting now?
Um, can they do that in parallel? I don't think they can do that in parallel.
I, you could probably start chatting with the building commissioner.
Yeah, I've talked to Jim, uh, a few times, so...
About the process, everyone getting the paperwork and all of that, starting together.
Yeah, and I'm gonna do the drawings that show, obviously, ADA compliant bathrooms, um, that would be...
Because I know you're gonna, that's gonna take some time, so you can start doing that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't say you can officially file for it until we actually have this, the solid approval on it.
This is all just a matter of paperwork, that's really all it is.
I know, I know.
This is the process, unfortunately.
What are you planning on getting up and running?
We were trying to get, by the end of September, we were trying to get up and running, but we need to do, obviously, some, some small work in that, inside there.
Good, we just, uh, go in there, once he submits the paperwork, then we sign it.
I don't know that we can do that.
We can't do that.
No. Okay. Thank you. And just for, uh, just so I can read Jim Aguirre's response here, and we already addressed this, but I didn't read his email directly in the record. Uh, this is from Mr. Jim Aguirre, Building Commissioner. "Without knowing the occupied square footage being proposed by the fitness training studio, I cannot comment on the parking requirements. Thus determining, uh, the occupant load allowances additionally indicated in the snippet below, which was just a part of his applicant, the applicant has stated that the minimal work will be done in the interior, the space will change from a private to a public use area, and will be subject to accessibility, and restroom requirements as defined in the State Building Code, which you're already talking to Mr. Aguirre, so you're set with that." All right. Okay, uh, thank you. Next, uh, on the agenda is Item 4B1, um, which is the Hunter's Hill Subdivision, Longwood Homes Incorporated, Special Permit Conservation Subdivision Modification. Uh, is the applicant present this evening? Okay, should we make a motion to continue with E&amp;L the next month?
Yeah.
We should, we already parted. Um, somebody wanna make a motion to, uh, continue E&amp;L to the next meeting on September 21st?
I'll make a motion, second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, it's Evan Watson with W Engineering, representing the applicant, Longwood Homes, with, for the Hunter's Hill Modification Plan. Uh, so since we've last met, um, we have two things to discuss, one of which was the review by Mr. Shaheen of Green Enterprise, Green Engineering.
Yep.
Um, so he gave us a comment letter, mostly referred to, um, compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. So we were able to fully respond to all of his comments, and we issued to him a revised set of plans and a comment letter. Some of the other items out of that letter, um, he rec, uh, he recognized that we don't comply with a few items, and most of those items were items that were approved under the original subdivision. So, what we've done is we've submitted a waiver, um, revised waiver letter, and we're not asking for any real new waivers, but what we're doing is either, um, asking for waivers that modify the section. So, for instance, if it says, um, you know, the width of the road is supposed to be such and such, uh, in this section, but the section has since changed, we've modified the waiver to correct the session. And then, there's some other areas, uh, for example, the, um, like, the width of the shoulder, it's supposed to be four feet, on the approved plans, it's two feet. So we're asking for that waiver to make the original, um, you know, accepted plans correct. So it's a little bit of paperwork there, but it's, uh, we appreciate what he's saying there, and it makes everything a lot cleaner. So it's kind of cleaning up the existing permit and moving forward with, with that. So we haven't heard back from him, we've submitted that all to him. Um, so I didn't go through the process of, uh, reissuing all the plans, et cetera, uh, while waiting for his, uh, comment of, uh, response. Um, the other item that I wanted to discuss with the Board is, on our original submission, uh, there was actually an error on the plan with Lot 88. Uh, Lot 88 had been, uh, sold, uh, not to our knowledge. We, we didn't see a house there, we didn't go diving in and looking for that. Um, so we thought that that was part of the project. So, uh, we've been made aware of that, and so I've revised the plan to have Lot 88, uh, shown as exactly as it was on the original subdivision plan, and it's not being, uh, requested to be modified or changed in any way.
Yeah, did we, did we get that? I don't think we got that.
So I have a copy here, this is, you can pass the, take one and pass it down. This is, um, on one side is the originally approved plan. And on the other side is how it's shown on the revised plan. So they are shown as an butter, just like all the other butters that are...
So which side is the original?
Uh, the prime engineering side, so the opposite side, yeah, right there.
This is the original Lot 88, that, Mr. Johnson?
It's the one that's highlighted in, uh...
Got it, okay. Okay. And then this, this one on the back here was what you guys modified it to, by the way?
Yes. So you can see it's now shown as, just as all the other lots that are owned by a butters. It has the same area, the same, uh, you know, math and everything else, so...
My question to this is, um, Mr. Johnson owns this lot, and it was a buildable lot, and now it's not, I'm wondering.
Not to say it's not a buildable lot, it's definitely challenging. So, we're, in the zoning regulations, uh, for a, um, conservation subdivision, says that you're not supposed to have a structure within 100 feet of wetlands. So when we were doing our evaluations for the type of house that he wants to put there, um, being a ranch style, which is spread out a little bit more, it didn't fit for the style of house that he wanted to put there. So, um, we had reconfigured it so that we could put a ranch style house there. You could still put a house there, but it wouldn't be the same as what he was looking to do. So that's why we had taken that, uh, basically put it into the non-buildable category on our side, and modified the lot. So, you could still build a house there, it's just a little bit smaller, um, than what we want to build.
So I'm not seeing a difference between these two sides, are you?
It's the same line, it, it, they're exactly the same, that's, that's the point.
You overturned it to...
Right.
Okay, I thought you were showing us what you've changed and what it used to be. You're just saying it now is what it used to be.
Yes, we're showing that it has not changed.
Lee Castaneda, Longwood Homes, the, the, the plan that we originally submitted as the modification plan
Got it.
was mistaken, we thought 88 was one of the lots that we owned. Um, so we modified it as part of that, and now we're, we're restoring it back to its original configuration.
All right, thank you, sir, no, I, I misunderstood when you first gave it to us, how you were showing it.
He bought that lot, it was a buildable lot.
No, I don't believe so, no... The wetland line right now is actually more advantageous than it was at the time he purchased the lot.
Well, why would he, because he paid a lot of money for that lot.
I, I have no idea, I can't speak to that, but, I mean, the wetland delineation...
He paid a lot of money for that lot.
The wetland delineation, if you look at the original plan, I don't know if you have the original plan?
Uh, that, I think it's on there. The wetland delineation actually moved away.
Away.
Yeah.
It's actually more favorable now than it was when he purchased the lot.
Let's see this here, it's down here.
Yeah, but I, I...
It was...
I don't believe that man bought a lot that was non-buildable.
No, it...
He was an intelligent man.
He's, yes, and, and, and they're saying, it was buildable, it's still buildable. The only thing is, they may not have done their due diligence the right way when they purchased the lot, to see if he would actually take the, the size house that he's looking to put there.
Might have to...
But one way or another...
He bought that house, right?
That's an act, I believe that's an act of...
I feel very uncomfortable with this, and I, I really, I really would like to see Mr. Johnson attend the meeting.
Mr. Johnson's attorney is present.
Oh, there you are. Okay, so, I, I would like to see you explain to us what, you know, how you feel on this, on that end.
Mr. Chairman, may I, uh, may I approach?
Yeah, yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Ed Casey. I'm a lawyer in Attleboro. The address is 144 Bank Street, the name of the firm is Coogan Smith. And shortly after Mr. Johnson appeared at this board, uh, and listened to information about late Lot 88, he contacted my partner, Michael McGann, who has represented members of the Johnson family for a long time. Mrs. Johnson is with me this evening. And so, it would be wonderful if I have an opportunity to explain a little bit of the background, if you're interested in hearing it. And then, the second purpose of this, uh, is to allow Mrs. Johnson to get up and to speak, uh, and I think to say that the frustration and the anger that was expressed by Mr. Johnson at this meeting, and that was directed at Attorney Castaneda, was, uh, inappropriate. Because Mr. Castaneda, as you know, is a successor to this development. The original applicant, uh, the original developer was Hunter's Hill LLC, and it was from Hunter's Hill LLC that Mr. and Mrs. Johnson acquired in 2007, Lot 88. Now, Lot 88 was on that approved definitive subdivision plan, and as the engineer indicated, the wetlands line was shown on that plan. Mr. and Mrs. Johnson were at that time represented by a very competent local attorney, David Gay. And David Gay had an agreement developed between the Johnsons and Hunter's Hill, whereby Hunter's Hill had one year in which to pursue a Conservation Commission Order of Conditions to allow construction of a single-family home on that lot. Because the Johnsons had always planned that this would be their retirement home. That is what the plan had been. But as Mrs. Johnson will tell you, she became seriously ill. And that time passed without making demand of Hunter's Hill for the return of the money. And right about 2008, as we all recall, you know, the economy, the real estate market went south. Hunter's Hill owns no property anymore, at least from what I was able to see. And the time within which the Johnsons might pursue an action against Hunter's Hill has passed. It's more than the six-year statute of limitations associated, associated with a contractual dispute. So, when Mr. Johnson was here at that earlier Planning Board meeting, I think that he erupted with, with that anger and frustration directed at Attorney Castaneda. Uh, and, as I see, as I said, it is important for both the applicant and the Johnsons to see that this project ultimately be constructed. As the engineer has said, uh, it's gonna be difficult in order to put a house on that lot without a variance from the zoning board. I don't have any experience with the Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals, but I've been told that they hew to the, to the requirement that you show that there are conditions unique relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography. that you show that there are conditions unique relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography. And if they don't get that variance, then I don't know whether the lot is buildable. And that's why I appreciate the fact that Attorney Castanetti has been very forthcoming in his conversations with me on several occasions, as well as by email, providing me with information and expressing a willingness to explore the possibility of acquiring back from the Johnsons their lot. If that perhaps provides a, a little bit of a background, and then I know that Mrs. Johnson has written out what she would like to say to you on behalf of the Johnson family, if you would allow her to read that. She finds this to be a little bit intimidating, um, but I think it would be helpful for Attorney Castanetti, as well as her, to explain to you, um, a little bit more detail.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Johnson, when you're ready?
One came for another.
Both Lynn and I have our physical limitations.
Mrs. Johnson, if you can just state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Nancy Johnson, and I live at fifteen forty-one Wellington Street, and we've lived there for sixty-one years. Um, as you know, we bought that lot back fifteen years ago, and we fully intended to build on it. You heard some of the reasons why we haven't. That first delay that we had was that they required that in the, in the development of that sort, you had to have, um, a hard-surfaced road, and it wasn't there yet. So, that held us up. And then you heard mentioned that, um, I got cancer. And it was, you know, a bit of a time getting over some of all of that, it was colon cancer. And then when we were ready to consider building again, we contacted, uh, the, the proper people, and we're trying to get our ducks in order to do it. And when we got down there, we were told there were no sewerage permits left. As you know, that community is self-contained with the sewerage, and that was major. That just put a stop to everything. We had a buildable lot when we bought it. There was no question, or, you know, and Attorney Gay was very thorough in, in what he had provided for background and research. So, when Long, uh, Long Home Builders was looking to, you know, do this community or complete it, we thought it was wonderful, because maybe finally we'd get a permit for that lot. So, yeah, there was an informational meeting. We were in Florida for that meeting, and we weren't back in time for it, but we didn't really even know about it until, um, we were back. We had the meeting probably a couple minute, a couple, I think it was a couple of weeks later, we got the notice. Now, the reason for that was the postal service. It wasn't the town, it was the postal service and their forwarding and things. Um, it was sent to Florida, they held it for a week and a half down there. They sent it back, and then it didn't get delivered for a while. So, we weren't aware of that, or we would have probably been at, I'm sure we would have been at the meeting. A notice from Conservation, uh, initiated that, um, we needed to do some research, see what the heck was going on, because we have not been aware of a lot of this. And we always thought that it was the permit that we were waiting on for sewerage. So, when I called Evan, and he was very pleasant on the phone, the engineer, his na- his number was on that, uh, Conservation notice of a hearing. And he's very surprised that, to hear that we owned Lot eighty-eight. So, I thought, now that's interesting, so I better do some research there. And also, um, what was, uh, he had suggested that I, um, contact Attorney Castanetti. In the meantime, my husband kind of, uh, got involved, and, um, he didn't really think it was necessary, because he thought that, um, sure, we got a buildable lot, well, you know, this is going to be wonderful for us. We'll get a permit for the, you know, for the sewerage. Anyway, I started calling town officials, and, um, the building commissioner's office left messages. They, they were machines that I got, but they did get back to me. But two days later, I called Attorney Castanetti, and during that conversation, he told me he had been unaware, he had been unaware of our ownership of Lot eighty-eight, and we would have access to a sewerage permit. And I was elated. But in the next breath, he said, "I don't know, as you've got a buildable lot there, and that's what you should be concerned about." So, he gave me a cell number in case I needed to talk to him further, and he suggested at that time that I consider, consider maybe adjusting the lot lines to make it a buildable lot. Um, he provided me with a cell number. He was, you know, uh, good to do that, and if I had anything else I wanted to talk to him about, I could. So, in the meantime, Lynn, my husband, was starting to ask questions, and he made a visit to the town offices. And as you are well aware, Lynn is not physically well, and he has memory issues, and he has a little bit of dementia. And he was very upset, as I was, to think that our lot was unbuildable, because that was news to us. After all these years, he felt we were being ignored, and his first inquiries did not show we owned a lot, even when we first started looking. And it was beginning to look like we were in trouble, so we contacted our lawyer. And, um, Lynn attended the planning board committee meeting, or your meeting, last, a couple of weeks ago, when he went to the Conservation. In the heat of the moment, Lynn spoke before the Conservation Committee and Planning Board, and he intimated that Attorney Castanetti had not been truthful. He was. There was nothing at all wrong with what Attorney Castanetti said. He was helpful in telling us the way he saw things. Um, I wish to apologize to him, truly. And, uh, when I talked with him that one time, he was agreeable, and he felt we could come to some, you know, sort of accommodation. The only, you know, interaction that we had after that was, he called the next morning after the meeting, this is Attorney Castanetti, most upset, and I don't blame him, and he was, uh, very much, um, disturbed, loud-voiced and hung up on us. So, we have been working through our attorneys, um, hopeful that we can come to some sort of affair, kind of, you know, agreement here. Bit of a shock that we don't have a buildable lot. He said something about, tonight about, we could build on it, but I think what we could build is not what we were thinking about, you know? We've had plans for quite some time. And so, um, I guess, um, I, I want to, you know, really apologize to you, but I also would like, you know, something fairly, you know, some sort of a fair accommodation here. Um, and I, uh, hope that that will happen. At this moment, we haven't had any kind of a, you know, agreement at this point between Long Home Builders yet. So, that's where things stand.
Well, I, I just want to tell you that I met with your husband the day after the meeting at the office, and he was very pleasant.
Thank you.
I didn't take it that he was upset at anyone.
Well, I can't take-
Other than the fact that he didn't have a buildable lot, a buildable lot that he always thought that he had. And that's understandable, I mean, not knowing rules and regulations and all of that stuff. He was sold a buildable lot. And whoever did that should have known that he was going to have issues right from the get-go. It really had nothing to do with long-built homes or anything, and, you know, none, none of what they did had anything to do with this. This was right from the beginning, from, if I'm understanding this correctly. So, I, I, your husband is a wonderful person, and I-
Thank you, well, I think he is too, but he-
Yeah, he wasn't that bad at the meeting, ma'am, not at all.
He really wasn't. I didn't think it that way at all. I really didn't.
Thank you.
But I did make a statement that I said, "Let's let long-built homes not come before us until they have a settlement in this."
Well, at this point, there has not been any, you know, there's been discussion with the lawyers, but, uh, nothing has been-
But you haven't been denied or even applied for a building permit warrant?
We, no, not at this point, because what happened was that, um, you know, we went down, started making motions, and they said, "You can't build, there's no permit for you."
Who told you that, though?
Well, there's no sewer-
Well, you can't build without a permit, right, because of sewer-
Well, I don't mean the permit, the sewerage.
All right, so I can just interject for one second?
Yeah, the sewerage permit.
The, uh, the orig- when it was originally approved, um, the sewer treatment plant, you know, hadn't been built.
Gotcha, I understand a lot.
So, they did this, the, uh, septic system, that they were allowed to do thirty-four lots.
Right.
And that's, so that's maxed out right now. So, until the sewer treatment facility is built, there are no further building permits to be issued.
Ma'am, just so you know-
But that's the biggest-
Long-built homes is top-notch builders.
Oh, I understand.
They've been fantastic in the town of Dyton.
Yeah, right.
Very, very good company to work with.
Mm-hmm.
But as far as, uh, like the ZBA, you know, in order to get a, a variance to the ZBA, you need to prove a hardship. You have the biggest hardship I've ever heard of, you know? Uh, I've seen a lot of ZBA meetings and a lot of people asking for hardships. You have a true hardship, and I wish you the best. I wish you the best, you know? Uh, the planning board's hands are tied by laws, rules, and regulations.
True.
But the ZBA can grant variances. We cannot.
No, I understand that.
But, yeah.
I just needed to say my two cents.
Thank you very much.
You're doing a good job, thank you.
Really appreciate you coming out, Mr. Johnson.
Next. Thank you for all of the explanations. That was-
I mean, it's here, but truthful, that's all.
So, we received the additional letter, uh, that you, you referenced that had the explanation of the waiver requests. Um, unfortunately, we got it a couple hours before the meeting, so we haven't had a chance to read it and absorb it, so we're gonna have to continue that.
It was our expectation that we would send that to, um, Mr. Shaheen.
Okay.
He would look at it in light of his comment, and then either say, you know, that makes sense, or that doesn't make sense, and make a recommendation to the boards. So, that was our expectation, so...
Yeah, so that's, that's what we're waiting on right now, so it's just, it's just late-breaking, because I know I looked at it like-
No, that's fine, yeah, we, um, I think we submitted the response last week.
Okay.
And then, um, we wanted to get him going, but I believe he's on vacation, so, um, in the meantime, we finalized the waiver letter to basically just say that it's complete. Didn't expect to go over every item.
Okay, all right, um, anything further?
No, unless there's any other questions, um, I've basically presented what we've wanted to present. And just, go ahead.
What, what you were, uh, saying that there was a four-foot buffer, uh, four-foot shoulder, and, uh, originally, the requirement is a four-foot and all that you guys had. Can you show us that, uh, do you have a plan of that?
I don't have it on, I didn't bring the full plan set in full size, but I did bring. And when you read our responses to Mr. Shaheen, again, we need to consider that this is not a new permit, it's a modification to an existing permit. So, we're not asking to modify the cross-section that's shown on the plan. What we're asking, what we're doing is asking a waiver so that the permit is intact and kind of cleaning it up. So, right here, this is the cross-section. So, this is the roadway, two-foot grass strip, and then the five-foot sidewalk. And this is in a forty-foot layout, and I believe your regulations say a five, fifty-foot layout. So, again, with the conservation subdivision, there's a lot of things that get modified through that process.
Narrow road width, and which, then that trank, the shoulder, and so forth.
I like that a lot. The four-foot is not even necessary for any, any of that, it's just good enough for-
The other thing too is, is the roads are already built. Some, some of the roads are already built, and they're built with this cross-section. So, you know, we're just trying to keep a seamless continuation, exactly.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent.
So, all the waivers that we're asking for is just to take what we already have and just continue doing it. So, we're not asking for anything new.
All right, thank you.
So, that's all, so if, if that's it, then I would ask for a continuance.
Is there any, uh, any other questions from the board? Okay, so, um, at, at this point, before we vote on the continuance, uh, I want to accept a motion to accept the August first, twenty twenty-two additional peer review in the amount of six thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the second. Uh, any discussion before we take it to the vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes, motion carries. Um, and then, um, so we're supposed to discuss and determine the application fee? Is that in addition to this, Carrie, or is it something else going on?
So, if you recall, when we did the opening of the, um, public hearing, we had the issue of the, um, Mr. Castanetti, if you want to.
Yeah.
Uh, that the application fee was extraordinary.
Right, and I, I think as it applied to the, you know, the, what you would typically expect for, for an amend, you know, for an amendment or a modification would be moving some lot lines for a couple of lots and, and what have you, um, as opposed to something of the magnitude of this. And, um, so we were just asking for some consideration, um, as it relates to this, that, you know, the, uh, the amount of the fee based on a per-lot basis, um, and I didn't bring the calculations with me, and I apologize, but, um-
I do, I do have it here, so, your email, when you submitted that.
Yeah, right, I was gonna say, I didn't bring it with me, but you, yeah.
No, that's okay, um, so it was calculated at like thirty-one thousand dollars for the application fee. And I know, we haven't touched or discussed it. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we still have that issue open.
We've had some informal conversations about it, but-
Yeah.
But we haven't come to any kind of agreement.
Right, and, and I, this is also something that the board has never, um, or at least in my time.
So, it was the difference between the thirty-one thousand or an entirely new application, is that what it was?
Yeah, I think it superseded even applying for a new application, right? A new application, so, applying for a new application is cheaper than a modification, so it, yeah.
But it, but it starts the clock over again, and you gotta have a new public carrier.
It, right, right, so, that's what his request is.
So, we can meet in the middle, or we can replace one with the other. Um, why don't we discuss that? So, that's, we're gonna continue this anyway? Uh, it can be best, I, I think, I don't think anybody's gonna have any objections here doing that, uh, but we can discuss it amongst ourselves and that.
I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
We can just do that, but, um, okay. Um, so, uh, at this point, are we gonna try to continue this next month?
We can. We have, um, a pretty open, well, we have Forest Hill scheduled for next month.
Okay, so, um, our next meeting date is the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I expect to have positive response back from the review, and we would have everything addressed by then.
Excellent, all right, so at this point, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to continue the Hunter's Hill subdivision to September twenty-first?
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the second, any discussion before we take it to the vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes, motion carries. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Have a good night.
Great work, guys. Next applicant is, uh, special permit, agenda item four B two for site plan review for Sunrun Installation Services at twenty-one fifty-four Horton Street. I'd like to read the public meeting notice. Too far, too ahead of myself. Okay, one moment, just gotta read this before we open this public hearing. Excellent, here it is. All right, uh, notice is hereby given that the Dyton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on the special permit application and site plan review by Sunrun Installation Services to construct an eleven-point-seven kilowatt DC small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system at twenty-four fifty-four Horton Street, being shown by assessors map seven, Lot twenty-six pursuant to sections forty-six hundred and fifty-four hundred of the Town of Dyton zoning bylaws. Copies of the application and plan may be requested by email, carry Easterday at dyton dot mass dot dash mass dot gov, or by visiting the Town of Dyton Planning Board's website. Any person wishing to be heard on- heard on the above application should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. So we have to have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Section.
Okay, we got a motion on the second. Any discussion before we take a two-vote? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five ayes. Public hearing is open. Sir, please introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, I'm Steve Kelly from Sunrun, and I live 16 Parkway Road in Stonem, Mass.
Thank you. All right, proceed.
We are proposing a small ground-mounted solar system in the rear corner of his lot at 2154 Horton Street. And it's pretty straightforward as far as a system goes. It's, you know, considered a small array, small system, and placed properly away from the wetlands that are there, and can be seen from the street. It's not on the building. I don't know if that was customer preference, but the request is to put it in the back corner of the lot.
Right. Okay, yeah, we got your paperwork here, drawings. It looks like you guys have done due diligence and talked to both the police chief and the fire chief, and got their concurrence. There is one, you mentioned wetlands, there is one feedback here from the Conservation Commission that says that the applicant has to apply for a notice of intent.
Okay.
So that needs to happen, and I assume that as also a review for the Conservation Commission once that happens, right? So that is one thing. There was an email here also about, from the Dayton Water District, asking for, I guess it's a conditional concurrence that as long as the electrical lines are at least ten feet from any underground, from any, from the water source. Do you have that email, Kerry?
He does have public water.
Okay.
Water service.
Water service. As long as the, any of the underground services to the freestanding solar assembly are at least ten feet away from any of the, from the water source, water source?
Service.
Water service, thank you.
Okay.
Then the Dayton Water District is also, so I guess it's a conditional approval. So I don't, I don't have enough detail about where things are laid out, I don't think. But those are two things to keep in mind with this.
I know we have to do dig safe prior to any construction, so the service will certainly be located, and I believe he also said it was a newer service.
Okay. Yeah, it's not shown on your, on your plan here that we received. See your panel there? See the delineation?
Typically coming off the street.
Straight into the house. Yeah, it's probably, it probably shoots right into the corner, but, I don't know. Did the Dayton Water District need some kind of additional information, or they, that was just an email, and that was good enough?
That was just an email from them.
Okay. Do they expect additional feedback?
He didn't request, but I can, I can reach out to him if you'd like. I did send him a copy of the entire application, including the plans.
Okay. Yeah, so it looks like you are, yeah, you got your wetland delineation, and I can read the email we got from the CONCOM, just to be thorough, shown here. Hang on one second. I'll repair it. I didn't see any, I wasn't concerned with anything else in the application. All your buffers from the back, the front edge, everything was well within requirements. So this is an email from Lisa Caledonia, conservation agent, emailed to Kerry Easterday. Good morning, Kerry. The Conservation Commission is in receipt of a copy of the planning application for plan review. At this time, we wish to inform you that this project will require a wetland filing, also known as a notice of intent, with the Conservation Commission. There are wetland resources nearby. Please reach out with any questions. So it looks like you have the wetlands called out here, and I assuming, I'm assuming somebody went out and flagged that?
It has been flagged.
Okay.
There was a professional surveyor that came in and laid out everything.
So when they went out there and flagged it, did they contact the Dayton Conservation Commission at all?
I don't have an answer for you.
Because they might have already done what they need to do, and it just, they haven't put two and two together. So that might already be addressed. Okay.
Sunrun specializes in residential rooftop.
Okay.
And we're doing a lot more of these ground mounts, and I'm not as familiar with them as I could or perhaps should be.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions we got in there. Whenever you're ready.
Um, no, go ahead.
Why are you not putting it on the roof? Is there a reason?
I'm sure there is a reason. I don't know if it's the size of the system. It may be the structural capability of the roof.
Right. Okay, we do have a bylaw on ground-mounted solar panels. I don't have the bylaw with me, and I don't know it word for word, but it clearly says in our bylaws that they are not to be seen from the street. So when I'm driving by, this resident, wherever that is, Horton Street, right?
Horton, yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna see this from the road. Now, everybody else has theirs up on the house, on the roof, right? Which you really don't see. Well, let's say I was his neighbor, and you had ground-mounted solar, right, which gives a reflection. It's like having mirrors. It's kind of an eyesore to the neighborhood, and that's where I'm going with this. We have never, ever had anything like this before us, and I don't know if this is the direction the Town of Dayton wants to go. My own personal opinion, I wouldn't want my neighbor to have it on the ground, because that could be in my yard, and they could, the sun could glare and just, you know, shoot, go through the windows of my home, or in my yard, or in the other neighbor's yard. And then, once we would allow this first one, the next guy's gonna want one, and then the next guy's gonna want one. And I'm not saying it's a good thing or it's a bad thing, but our bylaw, Kerry's probably looking at it right now.
4655.
Yeah, what's it say, Chairman?
It says here, "Small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations," which is exactly what this is, "front side and rear setbacks or system components shall be in accordance with setbacks required for accessory structures." They're good to go.
They're good to go?
The only thing I didn't see on this is there's an additional sentence here that says, "but in all events shall be at least 100 feet from any dwelling on another parcel." So how far is this from a dwelling on the adjacent parcel?
It is a decent amount. I think I saw 75 feet to the corner.
From the property line.
From the property line.
Yeah, so the dwelling would be at least an additional 30 feet, because that's the setbacks that are required. Well, now they are required.
But what's it say about seeing them from the road?
In that home next to it does have panels on the roof.
On the roof. Yeah, a lot of people put them on the roof.
Yeah.
You know, wherever you go now, you see solar, solar, solar. I don't wanna see it. It's my own personal preference. I like to see trees, flowers, herbs. I don't wanna see reflection.
I have them on my roof. Full, full.
They're fine on the roof, right?
Full confession.
Man on the moon might not like it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
All right, what's it say about?
What's it say about seeing them?
View shed. We're doing a lot of real-time reviewing this evening.
Well, this is important stuff. We're setting precedence with this.
Right, if we.
I think it's substantially more expensive to do it this way than it is on the roof.
Yes, it is. It's impressive. Safety environmental standards.
Especially the permitting process.
There's gotta be a rehearing.
Waivers, small scale. You know, if we, if we had, if we had the 46, if we had the 4600.
We'll let you.
So this is the home. That's the home right now. And then that's the closest.
How many feet is that?
We have, they're gonna be here. They're already from here, that's 74 feet, from here to the property line.
Well, that looks pretty damn close to 100 feet. Are we gonna be talking about inches or feet, or I don't know?
I suppose it's 100 feet. Right, so this is 74.9.
To the property line, then you have.
Property line, and then you have from there to the house.
Yeah, that's, I think it's gonna be right around that 100 foot.
Right around there. That needs to be measured by somebody. We just can't look at it and say.
Sure.
Right?
Basically, if we, you can get that by just getting the yes-built plan to the home to the right and left.
From the building department?
From the building department, and you should be able to figure that out.
What is it saying about seeing them from the roof?
The, the existing bylaw, I can't find anything that says.
Can't be seen from the street.
Sure. We have our standard operating procedure that we, you know, we modify. And then we had the bylaw thing that we tried at the annual town meeting that got defeated.
But also was the crow flies.
Right.
But this doesn't have that. I can't find it.
The house is around here, so it's gonna be.
So we gotta be very careful.
To the home.
I like the table.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, and it doesn't.
Safety standards.
Do a little more homework on it.
There's nothing.
Because we have no.
Looks like they're cutting a couple streets into back lots. I'm not quite sure how they're doing that.
Very expensive.
Starts, yeah, it starts.
So even if you zoom out, that's the only house nearby, with the exception of across the street, and obviously they're not gonna be 100 feet. And all these people within 300 feet have been notified.
Right.
So.
All the butters have been notified.
And none of them are here.
Yeah, no, unfortunately not.
None of them really.
I did get one who inquired, asked for a copy of the application, which I sent to people.
So I'm here to represent the people. That's what I'm here for.
That's right.
Right? You know, a lot of people don't understand this, and I'm saying this on camera, right?
We know.
The citizens of the Town of Dayton need to know that I'm working for them.
Sure.
And their neighbors.
I'm okay with that.
Right, because if we approve this.
Getting pushback from me on that. If we approve this, the next guy's gonna want it.
Well, we, actually, we can't approve it.
We can't?
Because he's gotta get an NOI.
There you go.
We cannot approve this.
He needs the NOI. He needs to apply for the NOI with the Conservation Commission. He needs to confirm that 100 foot to the other house.
Okay. I'm not against people having things, but this is something new. We are going to a new place with this. You know, and what is Dayton gonna become, right? This is a rural area. We wanna keep it, well, I, I can't speak for we. I don't speak for these people. I speak for myself.
You don't speak French?
Being, being less dependent on the grid.
But I want Dayton to be as rural as possible, okay? Like I said, I like trees, grow flowers. I live an hour away, but I know this town.
Right.
I mean, you know, if we do it for one, we could do it for all. If it's in our bylaws and it's perfectly legal, the planning board don't make rules. We follow them. So whatever the rules say, we're gonna follow. So you come back to that next meeting, and we may have to grant this, because that's the law.
Sure. Our goal, our goal obviously is to get it granted.
Right.
And so.
Right.
While maintaining a good relationship.
All right, so I read you the email from the conservation agent, and then I also told you that we did get the responses from the fire and police chief. They were both concurrence. I don't know if the 10 feet to the water service letter is, was in this original packet? I think it was a supplement, or is it an email?
It was an email.
Okay. So those are all the comments from the town departments, and you heard the concerns here on the board. So the only thing we have to vote on this evening is the motion to accept the peer review in the amount of $4,500.
There's a gentleman there that wanted to say something, so when you can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, if you could.
Sir, you have to come up to the microphone.
Please, you have to, you have to state your name and address.
I know your old. We get you an Uber if you need one.
Jeff Valley, 1928 County Street, Dayton.
Thank you, sir.
I heard what he had to say about the solar panels on the ground. Maybe you don't know, but the reason you can't put them on a roof is that the company that's gonna install them says your roof is not gonna hold the weight, because it isn't solar panels on the roof as well. It's snow in a pack. So what they will do, go to a ground. Now, when you go to a ground, some things crop up, which I found out. In fact, I found out in Europe. When you put them on the ground, who's gonna keep the brush clean? Because of the electrical units that go through the ground to wherever the batteries are. So that's another thing that's from them. In Houston, you're aware of it. You've gotta keep that, don't have to cut the lawn every day. You don't have to make a lawn.
But we're becoming very solar savvy.
Yeah. How many panels do we plan to use?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Well, it's a pretty good size, sort of thing. Shouldn't be much difficult. And if you're gonna keep it out of sight, like you want it, I'll provide these bushes grow 14 feet high. Make a hedge. Hello? It's a reason.
Thank you, Chief.
That will take care of that. Did they give you a little more information?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Right. And in Europe, they build them above the ground, and they put cows in the field, keep the brush down.
They're gonna do that on Tremont Street.
Do it on Tremont.
Well, they're doing it. It's an agricultural solar farm.
All right, at this point, I'd like to, is there anything further, sir, which to present this evening?
I don't think so. You know, it'll be all permitted, built-to-code.
Okay.
It'll be properly trenched, proper depth.
Okay.
It's minimally not invasive, damaging to the land, because it's a helical pile that gets driven in, and there's essentially no displacement.
Okay.
So it's, it's something that's pretty common. Just, we haven't done a ton of them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, I'd like to accept a motion, to accept, entertain a motion to accept the peer review in the amount of $4,500 from 7/29/2022? And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hear a motion and a second. Any discussion before we take a two-vote? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's five ayes. Motion carries. And Kerry, we, do we have room in our September 21st agenda to continue this? The next meeting is September 21st. Contain a motion to continue for the peer review to September 21st, 2022?
Second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion before we take a two-vote? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. See you September 21st.
You're good, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I don't need to sign anything, or?
Not unless you really want to.
We have a checkbook.
That'd be great.
I think you have $4,500.
That was good.
On camera. All right. Excellent. All right, so next item on the agenda is 4B3, special permit for the Dayton Center LLC, 1901 County Street, map 17, lot 29. So I need to read the notice here before we start. And I guess before we start, bold disclosure to the members of the board, anyone else left here, Mr. Salino was my attorney once for a personal matter, it's for builder stuff. This was probably 10, 12 years ago, so I don't know if you remember that, but.
I was gonna say even more than that, maybe 15?
Probably 15 years ago, or on Tommy's way. So if there's any objections, I will gladly abstain or recuse myself. Any objections from anybody in the audience here?
No objections from me.
Nothing, all right. So we'll just continue. Thank you, appreciate that. Nice to see you again, Peter.
Nice to see you.
All right, so I'll read the notice into record. Notice is hereby given that the Dayton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on the special permit application by Dayton Center LLC to construct residential apartments on the second floor of 1901 County Street, being shown as assessors map 17, lot 29, pursuant to sections 4942 and 4943 of the Town of Dayton zoning bylaws. Copies of the application and plan may be requested by email at kerryk Easterday@dyton-mass.gov, or by visiting the Town of Dayton Planning Board's website, and a person wishing to be heard on the. or by visiting the Town of Dyton Planning Board's website, and a person wishing to be heard on the above application should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. Okay, so... Alright, so we have a motion to table a peer review, we'll talk about that after, so, uh, if you wanna go ahead, you can have a podium. Name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, members of the board, my name is Peter Solino, I'm a lawyer at five fifty Locust Street in Fall River. I represent the petitioner applicant Dyton Center LLC. Okay, the matter before you is an application for a special permit, and I think phrasing the argument as follows makes the most sense. The property is in a mixed-use overlay district. In that district, pursuant to section four-nine, four-two of the bylaw, apartments on an existing building with a second floor are allowed by special permit issued by this board as the special permit granting authority. The subject at nineteen oh-one is an existing building with two floors, the second floor is empty. The proposal is, uh, as has been submitted to Ms. Easterday, to construct the second floor into sixteen one-bedroom apartments. We submitted some detailed analysis relative to parking and the structure itself. So number one, we believe that the structure can certainly house sixteen units. We believe that we've exceeded the parking requirements. Um, my client owns the building as well as a lot to the east, and we've shown on our plans, uh, some overflow parking, which again, I think, based on our calculations, I think eighty-three spaces are required, and the proposal consists of a hundred and sixteen spaces. So we think we've exceeded the, uh, parking requirements, and really, the impetus for the request is that my clients have owned the building for several years, and have no interest, or they can't get much interest in the second floor space. It's a big, open cavernous space, and it's really tough to market and or list. So they've decided to pivot and approach this concept, um, and ask for a special permit before this board. In terms of the legal standards surrounding the special permit, I'd certainly submit to you that the proposed use is no more detrimental than what's there because of the plentiful parking at the site. And, uh, certainly, Mr. Woods, I've been sitting here listening to What You Want in Dyton, but this is on one thirty-eight, so I understand you want trees, but I think if we're staying on that corridor, I think an apartment use, albeit not a conservation type, leafy use is appropriate for that area, and I think that's why the mixed-use overlay district lays out right there. So with me is Steve Rizendis, who's the manager of Dyton Center LLC, um, and we'd be happy to take any questions or feedback from the board, but it's submitted to you that I think the proposal's pretty straightforward. I do think it is not more detrimental than what's there, and as a consequence, meritorious of a special permit.
Thank you. Uh, I read what, uh, your analysis on the parking areas, and, uh, uh, thank you for the, uh, all the detail, and I agree that what you provided is, is more than sufficient, and well, uh, well, well above and beyond the minimum requirements. Uh, so I don't have any issues there. Um, I didn't have any concerns on this application. Does anybody in, uh, in members of the board have anything they'd like to address at this point? Any questions for the applicant?
I read the application very thoroughly.
Okay.
Only because.
Your job.
About town employees, uh, is affiliated. We wanna make sure everything is on the up and up, and, you know, I'm very satisfied with everything.
Good.
As long as the fire chief's satisfied and the sprinkler system gets installed.
Yeah, I think it has.
You know, all those codes need to be followed.
Right.
And, uh, you know, very happy.
Okay.
I mean, things, you know, I understand business is business.
Yeah, but I mean, ultimately, we have to comply with the codes.
Of course you have to comply with the codes.
The question before you is use, will you let us make this use of that space? That's what we're asking. But all that has to follow, no question.
Yeah.
And I put that in the narrative that, um, you know, the septic system, I think, is appropriate, the elevator exists, but a sprinkler system will be installed.
The septic system is, uh, holds that which has nothing to do with us, but if there is a different type of business on the first floor that goes in.
Yep.
And the septic system is at capacity by adding these apartments, what happens then if another restaurant comes in or a different type of business? How are we supposed to address that then?
I think we'd have to modify, would we not? I don't think we can take in that additional use without applying for.
That would be a concern that, not for me right now, but it would be for board of health.
Yeah, to me, it's a board of health question, so if it's a restaurant, they have to get your food permits, and there's an analysis surrounding the use of the space.
Well, the restaurants are, usually go by the amount of tables, so that, that, that are into the place, so, and I think they are the, the most detrimental to any septic system.
Agreed.
So.
All we're gonna do is approve the special permit.
Right.
The board of health is gonna check the septic.
Yeah.
The fire chief's gonna check the sprinkler systems. We just grant the permit.
I hope you will, but yeah, the only thing before you is, can we have sixteen apartments on the second floor, please? Right.
Yeah, he asked nicely, what do you, what do you do?
Is there any way to get you to plant any trees over there?
I don't, I can't speak to trees, sorry.
Okay.
But if we weren't on County Street, maybe.
That, that is the only thing, is how does the, according to the bylaws, the amount of landscaping that's required by the town? Uh, how does that comply to, to that?
I don't think that we're under any obligation, because I think it's a minor situation, based on the amount of parking we're providing. So I don't see a specific requirement, I'm happy for someone to tell me.
You're good over there.
I'm not trying to.
No, I understand.
Bring up anything, but it is, it is only bylaw that we have.
No question.
For a square foot of building, so much landscaping has to be provided.
Right.
And I'm not really sure that, because it's an existing building, I don't think there's any difference that's.
My view is that if it were a major site plan request, then you have jurisdiction to modify the plan. And say you need fourteen-foot abrevieties, and stuff like that, but I don't think this is a case.
Are there butters here this evening?
Any questions on you, uh, you live across the street?
Before we do that, um, any, any other questions from the board members?
Come on up, sir, if you have something to say, you have to come up, please. Yes, sir. Because this is being recorded, and, and they need to hear you.
I don't, but I'm Peter, nice to meet you. Jeff, nice to meet you.
I live on County Street, I face them. Where is the parking you're talking about? On the Sunset Avenue side?
It's all around the building, sir.
Okay.
You're gonna have neighbors.
Thirty-eight, so it would be back here.
Is that where the Teescape?
Teescape's. Yeah, so Teescape's is over here, this is one thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight, I live right over here.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the parking.
Yes, as well as over a floor of eight spots over there.
I thought Teescape owned us.
They do not.
They do not.
They lease a piece of this over here in the back.
Alright.
But Dyton Center LLC owns that piece.
The other thing concerned to me is the septic system.
That has nothing to do with us.
Don't think it's gonna make it, the present one, it isn't that big. I got a bigger one in my backyard than either. Alright, just be aware.
Board of Health.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
It's not up to us, chief.
It's good that we're speaking to concerns out loud, but yeah, they're gonna have to review it separately.
We're talking, gonna have sixteen apartments, you're actually one bedroom. You can have a single mother come in with children. Where do the children play? Where do they go out?
You got a highway both sides, yeah.
You know?
You got a highway.
That is a tough area, believe it or not.
What you wanna say, Sunset Avenue, I get, I look on that, I get past.
He's got the ridge crack on that side.
Eight miles an hour.
Yeah, we got ridge cracks.
You got kids that cause, cause full now their parking lots, and he's gonna get killed.
You know, is this something they, you know, people put in consideration?
I don't have a problem.
It's just.
I don't have a problem, has it?
You know what, these have been good tenants, none of that, the guy owns it, or whoever they, uh, you, you know, they keep it clean, they keep it neat. These parking lots got no crack, nothing.
It is a beautiful place.
Couldn't have anything better.
I can tell you that the one thing we're missing in Dyton is a place where somebody can, or, or, you know, can rent an apartment, or somebody can.
I understand.
Housing like this. So this, I, I see this as a good opportunity for the town of Dyton, I understand that there's concerns about safety, um, there, there's a parking lot buffer, I mean, I, I, I get, I, I know where you're going, but, and I know that it, it isn't a typical Dyton residence, uh, because Dyton residents have lawns, or they have, they have places you can play off-street. I understand that, but, um, this is.
I can put them in my yard.
Right, as Mr. Solino and, and the, what was presented here, this is, this is trying to repurpose a, a space that's not being used right now.
Thing is, the spacing, you know, it is a dangerous area, believe it or not.
Okay.
Not counting the head-on collision she's had.
Well, it's on a straight run of, of the highway, if people can look left and right, they don't wanna look, then they deserve it.
Don't say that, believe it or not, you would be a.
Anybody come sit in my driveway?
Do you know where I live?
Morning and at night?
Yes, I do.
You know where I live?
Yes, I do.
You ever see the car that went up the rock? No.
What, you must have been?
Because people not paying attention to the driving, this car went this way, the woman tried to get out of the way, she drove the car right up to the top of the rock.
We can't control that, sir.
But I know, I'm just telling you, it is a dangerous area, and it take it under consideration. The one thing you do, it's not posted, that place isn't, no.
Honestly, I can, I can say that I would rather see one-bedroom apartments than to see two or three bedrooms.
We're not, listen, I got no complaints with that. What I'm trying to tell you, daily, you people.
It's just smart.
Hurting somebody, posting.
No children.
Both sides, highway, state would be to take care of the highway, but Dyton can take care of Sunset Avenue.
Alright.
You know, you do something, because if somebody gets hurt, they can come back on you and say, why is it posted? That I lose.
Alright, thank you.
Go on, go on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comment.
Nice seeing you.
Thank you, nice seeing you.
Hold next.
Yes, sir.
So, we can't monitor who lives in a one-bedroom apartment, it's completely discriminatory, so that's the reason we didn't address it. I don't know if that's lost on the board or the butters, but, uh, the concept of one-bedroom was to intentionally reduce density for safety and traffic reasons, so that was part of the plan.
Yeah, good plan.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Solino.
Thank you.
Alright, at this, uh, at this point, uh, we have a peer review that was here, uh, was provided, um, entertain a motion to table a peer review. Um, is it a table, or I don't think we're intending on using it at all at this point?
Uh, well, I think we have to hear from our peer, the response from our.
Okay, they have to respond, so we'll, uh, so, so the motion, uh, that needs to be made is to, to table a peer review, uh, to hear back from the review engineer.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, that's five ayes. Um, and also, um, we voting, uh, this evening to approve this special permit, we're waiting to hear back from the peer review.
Um, before you do that, you probably wanna read in the comments from the department.
I've only got the one, is that right?
We had a couple, we had, um, the Assistant Building Commissioner.
Yeah, I've got that one.
We had the Fire Chief.
Okay, well, Fire Chief's in the package, you got it, okay.
I think that was it.
Okay. Alright, so email here from, uh, Chief, uh, Fire Chief, uh, Kerry, the Fire Department's biggest concern with this is the fact that there is an unsprinkled, this is an unsprinkled building, uh, and discussions I've had with the managers of the property, the intent is to sprinkle the entire building during the construction. They recognize this as a requirement. Um, so that's the letter from the Fire Chief, and then the other.
Should be right before that one.
Very much, uh, so this is an email from... Oh, it's Glenn, okay, I thought it was from Nancy, uh, from Glenn Hathaway. Well, Nancy's up here, Nancy forwarded the email from... Uh, so, uh, Glenn Hathaway, who is the Assistant Building Inspector for the Town of Dyton, said, "After reviewing the applicant's letter, I have determined that the Dyton Center's proposal is in compliance with the zoning bylaws of the Town of Dyton. No additional parking is required to meet the minimum, any proposed parking would be outside of the requirements of the bylaw." So everything appears to be in order. Missing anything, Mr. Easterday? That's the two, right? So at this time, um, I'd to entertain a motion to approve the special permit for Dyton Center LLC, nineteen oh-one County Street.
So move.
Second.
The motion and a second, uh, any further discussion on the matter before we take it to a vote?
I'm good.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, so next item on the agenda, item number five, approval of the meeting minutes for July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve those?
No move.
Take second.
Second. You, you can't vote with a point or a glance.
Well, you already said second, what am I gonna do, say second?
Alright, motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's five ayes, meeting minutes are approved. Kerry, are there any further correspondence items?
Yes, we do, Charlie.
Wow.
Excellent.
Wow.
Second news reporter.
So the first one is, we received a, a letter from a Mr., Mr. Timothy Toulon of Massasoit Road, just, uh, letting, uh, the planning board know that he's officially notifying the planning board of the election of the new trustees to the Council Oak Trust Homeowners Association, with the trustees and their terms of office are as follows, excuse me. Timothy Toulon is the president from June thirtieth to twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me. Brett Kimball, Treasurer, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And Kelly Smathers, Secretary, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So they are a, um, subdivision off of, um, I wanna say around Milk Street in that area?
Yeah, Milk Street and Main.
Uh-huh.
Excuse me, so that's, uh, Council Oak Estate, so that would be Council Oak Way, Manamunab, and Massasoit Road.
Okay.
So new trustees. Um, the other thing we received, actually today, it was, um, handed off to me by Conservation Agent Lisa Caladonia, that, uh, Maris Lane has been notified by the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife um, that on April fourth of two thousand thirteen, they were issued a permit for the development. Um, and their permit now expires on July seventh of twenty twenty-four. Based on their records, work has occurred on the site, and several lots are sold. Lots one, two, five, eight, and nine remain within the ownership of the developer. As a subsequent owner of the project, you are responsible for ensuring project, ensuring project compliance with all terms and conditions of the permit. The division has not received confirmation of having satisfied all required pre-work conditions. Therefore, work associated with the project occurring at this time may be in violation of the permit. Um, please provide demonstration of compliance with the permit, um, using an attachment which is a form no later than August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, for any conditions for which the project is not in compliance. A written plan and timeline to address the outstanding condition must be submitted. So Conservation Agent just wanted to bring it to our attention, because as you know, they're trying to wrap things up and bring this up, um, bring it to a close.
Mm-hmm.
With road acceptance and stuff, but we can't do any of that.
Okay, so they'll circle back to us, got it.
Um, and that falls under with the state, so it's not a local thing that has to be satisfied, but she just wanted to make sure that we were aware, and the Conservation Commission is gonna be notified tomorrow, they have a meeting tomorrow. It's also my understanding that both the Conservation Agent and the Building Commissioner, we're gonna be getting in touch with the current developer to give him his heads up, to say, hey, just FYI.
So the deadline is coming gone, do we know if they've done anything?
Uh, we don't know yet, because I know the Conservation Agent and, uh, the Building Commissioner were reaching out to him this afternoon. I haven't heard anything yet, whether they've been able to touch base with him or not. Um, so as soon as I receive word, I'll keep you apprised of the situation.
Okay, thank you very much, any other correspondence?
And that's it.
Excellent, any public input? Input, input.
Got a lot of people on the board.
Anybody wanna step down and be public?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
There you go.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Goodnight, cable.